Okay, it's 6:30 PM. On Tuesday, September 27. This is meeting 1835 of the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. We're called to order. We are both here physically in town hall. And we also have people joining us by Zoom. You have a weird message on the screen. We have a forum with four members physically present plus Dave on Zoom. So all the regular members are present. As far as added out of channel items, do you have anything? No, okay. We have no legal notices. The next order of business is public participation. Is there anybody in the room who wants to bring up something that is not on the agenda tonight? Anybody on Zoom? Joining us remotely that wants to bring up something? Okay. Last call. And we'll move on to approval of minutes. We got our minutes with the package. I think you got a phone call.
Yeah.
A phone call from Frank with some corrections.
On line 133. He said that Jim Thurs was the commission number who voted, not Gaudi. And he said the same for line 167. Line 202. And line 266. All of those cases, it was Thurs, who was the commission member who voted, not Gaudi. And then he says also note on line 111, it should read 297 North Road.
Which one was that?
111. It says 197.
The nits I found were on line 42. And on line 105, I believe it's Don's Auto Service, not Dan's. And on line 82. For the Historical Society, I question if we were planning to hold a hearing on July 26, 22. I think it was September 13. That line number is something.
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two. It just seemed too old a date, impossible. Anybody else see things?
Anne, could I bother you? This is Peg. What was your correction on line blah, 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 blah? Forty-two again?
Forty-two. It says the applicant is Dan's Auto Service Center. And I, instead of Dan, it should be Don's. So I would replace the A with an O.
Okay. Was that not line 105?
It's also in line 105.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? If. People are content, a motion to approve the minutes with some edits would be in order?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of regular meeting 1834, held on 7th September 13, 2022, as amended.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
And Dave is an I too, so that's unanimous.
Anne, when I do that approval motion, I am going to list all those amendments, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Under receipt of applications, do we have anything? No? Nothing under performance bond, actions, permit extensions, and road acceptance? Okay, we have continued public hearings. The first one is PZ 2022-19, 297 North Road, a special use permit. The issue here, I believe, is the deadline to close has already passed. So we should have closed at the last meeting. And we did not. So the question for the commission, the applicant has requested an extension. But. That's up to us if we want to consider it. And. I think since we are past the date. Are continuing the public hearing, it's questionable if we should.
I could speak with Mary Cam and Northwood Materials. I specifically asked that question at the last meeting if we statutorily had our timeframes. And I was told yes. And then we did have it in writing yesterday for the extension.
Yes.
I believe Russo's office did present that.
Okay.
And Jay's out on vacation this week, so the plans haven't been completed yet. And we're still gathering information for the rest of the items that was requested by your town plan.
So. I think the issue for us is. We're past the deadline. Misinformation was on the table last time, but we are where we are. Does the commission want to continue the public hearing or close at this point?
I was thinking anyway. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read what the statute says about. How long of an extension are you asking for?
Thirty days.
Thirty day extension.
I believe that's what Dana Steele had written in his memo. I would have requested it last time, that's why I specifically asked my question.
Yes, Mary.
Yeah, Maria Susan Henry's wrote Bradbrook. Mr. Public, able to know what the reason for the extension is?
Um, there is a document submitted to the town. And it's to come into zoning compliance. It says, Mary. And the issue with the. Timeline for closing the hearing. That I discovered the error in writing my staff yesterday.
Can you help me which statute is about?
That's regulations.
It wouldn't be in there?
It wouldn't be there. Maybe in most statutes. Yeah.
I'm just kind of, I mean, is there any guidance as far as you said, it's within our purview to allow it?
Yeah.
Length of term, I mean, any guidance at all as far as what circumstances we would grant one under?
Well, the commission has the authority to offer an extension when the applicant accept the extension. And it's specifically under. Eight dash three of the state's factions. And so I believe you can have up to 65 days.
And there's no, no stipulation as to any criteria that needs to be met or anything like that for what would qualify for an extension? It's totally discretion, Mary.
Oh, get on the outcome extension, this has been a hurry.
Until the last time we were fine.
Yeah.
So.
Dave, do you have an opinion on if an extension should be granted?
I didn't hear what Jim had to say. What comment did you make?
Where you're cutting in and out, we can't.
What comment did Jim, I didn't hear what Jim had to say.
I have no problem giving the, the application extension for 30 days.
Okay, okay. And Joe?
I said last meeting, we told them we wouldn't close it, so. We have said that.
Okay, okay. And there's no press set by, no grounds to tell us what to do. It's all 100% within our purview.
That's what Ruth Ann and Sam.
Okay.
And 30 is enough, Mary?
Uh, we believe so, yeah. We're in pedal, I believe, up to 65 days. So we're gonna try to do it in 30, if not, then we'll take it from there, but. And if I can ask for 65 now, I'll do that as well, but I think 30 should be fine.
It sounds like it's in the majority of the.
Okay, then. A motion to. Grant an extension. Would be in order. And then.
Thirty?
If we do it once, it'll do 65 days. Your next meeting that's within 30, next two meetings will be within 30, but that day. I guess they cover everything, let's just go for the 65 days, so we don't have to worry about anything.
Yes.
Could I ask one more question? I've been on Rice Road for 40 years, and I've probably seen maybe three chemic trucks in 40 years. Couple of weekends ago, there was a caravan going down Rice Road.
Okay, right now we're deciding on if we're going to extend the hearing. If we decide we're extending it, then we'll take comment. So with 65 days, take us to the November 22nd.
I would stick to 30, only because if you use all 65 now, and the commission has a decision to make, you're gonna, you won't have it to use later. Because 65 applies to all decisions to open the hearing, close the hearing.
Okay, you're right, you need to have, leave us time to act.
Yes, so. Are we, are we talking, then we're gonna do 30 calendar days, are we gonna do till our meeting of the 25th?
I think it's good advice for the 25th, that it doesn't expire in between.
In between meeting dates, okay. So I'll make a motion that we grant an extension to continue the public hearing until our meeting date of October 25th.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, that's unanimous. So now that we have decided to continue the public hearing. We have the applicant here and.
With that said, I'm requesting that we could table this meeting to the next scheduled meeting.
Well, we have people from the public who want to comment, so.
Yeah, we just want to need to let them comment. For Rita Susan Henry's wrote, I just wondering if the remediation efforts has anything to do with the traffic that's been on Rice Road? Because I've never seen it before, and I've been in there 40 years. I may have seen one truck here and one truck there, but I've never seen a caravan and trucks coming down Rice Road. So I just wonder if that's gonna be something to look, that we're gonna have to look forward to for the next Thursday or Sunday.
Mary, do you want to answer that?
The lead truck was.
We, we only have two chemists on dump trucks, so I don't know what that means.
Because it was coming, truck was leading the pack, and then there was planes, no markings on the other dump trucks that went on down Rice Road. So I'm just curious as to why they were following each other.
Yeah.
Because these seven are each.
I, I don't have the answer to that, I don't suspect.
Okay. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to comment on this application?
I don't believe you actually voted to open the hearing. It had, we never closed it.
You didn't close it, I sent you continued it, okay. That's it.
Anybody else who's online who wants to comment on this? Okay, so at this point. I think. We have no further comment tonight. It's continued until our next meeting.
Yes. October 11th, enough time sufficient for you to act on what you need to do, or you want to continue till the 25th?
No, let's, let's go for the next meeting, let's see what we can get done in before, so we don't run out of time.
Our agenda on the 11th, is it?
We have a historical society, so a lot of people.
It's gonna be a very busy meeting.
I'm gonna be like a farmer. Yeah, but we'll be quick, bring a snack. At the very least, if we're not ready, then we can, you know, just request a tabling at that point, if that's all right with you. With the timeframes being sure, I don't really want to push the issue.
I make a motion, we continue this public hearing of PZ 2022-19, 297 North Road, special use permit renewal for slow management facility. The applicant is Northwood Materials LLC, until our next meeting of October 11th.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? None. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, that's unanimous. Dave was a yes to.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, we have tabled the next item on the agenda, the 115 Scantic Road Special Use Permit for Event Hosting.
You need a motion to continue that hearing, or it's not going to be able to.
Well, we opened it and it's been tabled. It's been tabled way back.
Okay. No further motions required there?
We have no new public hearings. Under Old Business, we have nothing. So the next order of business is. PZ 2022-2014 North Road for a special use permit for site plan modification. The applicant is Don's Auto Care. And that was also tabled till 10/11, so that won't come out tonight.
You can see on the 11th.
Yep.
Someone better bring things.
The next order of business is Other Business and the meeting calendar with our packet. We've got a 2023 meeting date suggestion.
So December 26th, so back when, yeah, back when Joe was. Chair for 18 years and saw that in my notes earlier. We should take off the second week of August, and we should take off the week of December 26th, right, yeah, Christmas.
Yeah, I would think that the after Christmas is a hard one to expect anyone coming.
The second week of August, because everyone's on vacation. That's what we used to do.
I think last year, the recommendation was we put them on the calendar and then cancel them. But I don't think we canceled them this year. I think we had them, so we don't want to have them.
No, I think that we could, one of the Christmas.
Take them off the calendar.
December 26th.
Should come off, I agree.
There's no, well, it'll show up, but. It'll show up the other Christmas.
That's what we've done.
So this means when I get leftovers. Day for Thanksgiving.
Be the day, a few days before Thanksgiving, maybe.
Good afternoon, stuff.
Um, what's the feeling on August 22nd? Are people gone? Do you want to remove that from the list?
I'm just kind of scrolling through that none of this comes conflicts with any kind of holidays or anything like that.
Unless that was Joe's vacation, everything that.
Yeah. Between and a half the holidays, but they're all she's.
Okay.
Putting those together. Last year.
But we can certainly leave the one of August on and see what happens. It's usually generally slower.
Yeah, there's no agenda.
It can't hurt, I guess.
Yeah. Do we need to formally adopt this calendar, or is this just a discussion? Previously.
It definitely.
Okay. So does somebody want to make a motion to accept the proposed calendar minus December 26th?
I make a motion that we accept the proposed meeting calendar for the Planning and Zoning Commission for the 2023 meeting dates. With the modification of eliminating the December 26th planned meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
That's unanimous, Dave is a yes to.
Anne, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Um. You also have your Aqua for Protection Commission. Involved, and sometimes that goes after your own meeting. Does this meeting schedule include the Aqua for Protection?
No, that's a separate commission. It would have to adopt its meeting dates, or then it's next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so for correspondence, we have none. That brings us to the 2122 annual report. And we got a draft with our packages. And it was a good draft. I don't know if it's appropriate to add to the report. Where it says there's two alternate positions open. Maybe we could add something like interested citizens of East Windsor are encouraged to apply to fill board vacancies. Since diversity of experience and viewpoints is helpful or something, or, you know, it would be nice to have. Yes.
And should they, should they change the thing about Frank being a alternate and Dave being a, and Dave a full-time member?
It happened in this school year, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I can add it, and then I can.
That's all I had.
I was wondering if under some of our notable amendments. Some of the. Amendments we made were because they were required by statute. And I don't know if that's worth mentioning or not. The first two. First two bullets. Yeah. The only reason I was thinking it was worth mentioning is some people have come out kind of saying, why did we do these things in some of the hearings? And the reason we did it is we were required, it wasn't driven by us. Okay.
Does tiny homes make the list, or? Next year? It's good you're excited about.
Oh, yeah.
Has she applied? Is she moving forward?
No, it's gonna take. We should, we'll get her, well, she's gotta get her plans and stuff prepared and order it.
Anything else people can think of that occurred? Last year that is worthy of mention?
Covered it.
Okay. So I think you have, I think are seminal. That's a fact. Um, discussion of draft warehouse point regulation that might.
Hey. Um, so in your packets, I think you have the next version of the draft, and she's got it, she's here. If you spin through it, you'll see how highlighted sections in yellow are where the changes are. And I've got some comments and rationale margins to kind of give you. There's another one here. With him.
Oh.
They don't, he's a paper. Um. To kind of explain some of the changes, so. Starting on the. One, two, fourth page, you'll see. Made some clarifications to the setbacks table to make it a little bit easier to understand. And in certain situations. Coming up with a contextual standard is impossible, because maybe the parcels nearby are not developed, so it's no structure. Or it's, there's some other use of the property, so again, clarify that. The. If you can't establish, then we're gonna revert to the 35. We then made, included some notes here related to maximum coverage. And the point here is again to. Allow for or encourage mixed use. And so we're providing a very small allowable increase in site coverage if there are multiple uses on the property, because. You're gonna have parking and other things, and even if you have multiple uses, potentially if they're not in separate buildings, they're just gonna inherently be more coverage. And so to sort of encourage reuse of the existing spaces rather than continually, you know, moving outward, we're, we're suggesting, or I guess I'm suggesting that. And then the other thing that we added was the site amenities, these things we're asking them to include related to pedestrians or. Whatever it could be, a small parklet or other, again, things we're describing in that, that we list in here as a site amenities. We're not making them count that towards their coverage. If they put in a patio or have a park bench and other things that people in the area can use, they shouldn't have to have that count against them for coverage. So specific amenities.
What about public charges?
Public charges like the EVs? I mean, I guess that would be, I mean, those are fairly small. Um, we could certainly add that in based upon whatever the final language.
You've also said that they're, if they're under gate fee. They're not a structure.
Then they wouldn't.
In the last, okay.
So I can, let me just make a note of that. Um, okay. Um, so the other stuff, I'm moving on to the next page. One of the comments that we had was related to what originally had been referred to as a net zero stormwater approach, and that in certain areas, complete infiltration is not possible. I don't know that. The sites, you know, the majority of the sites in warehouse part are just, it's not, it's not on the table. We can't do anything with onsite infiltration. We gotta put it all on the pipe and send it out to the river. But because I'm not an engineer, we. Well, I would imagine that there is some, some drainage there, but rather than requiring.
The blue ditch.
Well, right, and so we don't want to, we don't want to ignore sort of those qualities. But we also don't want to then say that because of the way that everything is written, it's gonna go into a pipe onto a state or town road, and it'll just not be anyone's problem. So we've modified the criteria. So that it requires that they design and basically maintain 50% of the coverage on the property. So that there is some flexibility. So again, you know, this is something that I think is gonna be. More the other discussion when we go to an actual public hearing on it, because I'm sure folks will have. Opinions about it and whether it's feasible, but. Many towns are moving in the direction of requiring people to be responsible for their stormwater. We can't just generate it, pipe it, and make it someone else's problem through the MS4 process and other things. We have obligations on the town side, and. As we continue to develop, whether it be with 40% coverage or 80% or whatever, that water is going somewhere. And so. This is leaning in that direction, but we dialed it back from where it was, which basically said net zero, knowing. This is leaning in that direction, but we dialed it back from where it was, which basically said net zero, no increase. So we, we stepped that back considerably. Clarified, below that clarified the, the, the visual screening, which used to just say buffering to clear. That we want there to be a visual barrier between parking and between residential commercial uses. Not gonna require you to put a twenty five foot buffer like the regs traditionally require because they won't have that space. But we don't want, we still want there to be some separation. I believe I added a couple of additional graphics, um, just building them out as we go and employing them from other places. The other major component to this is the very last section, five oh seven point eight, which is called reduction standards. One of the things we talked about at the last meeting was, um, not wanting to create issues with single family homes and other things because. It's sort of been uniquely developed and so this is, um, setting some standards by which the commission can issue. Uh, a reduction in s- some of the requirements, um, related to. The development of the site and there's, there's specific criteria that they need to meet. So this is. The best way to explain it is it's similar to a variance. If the requirement is thirty five feet. And under specific circumstances and they meet the criteria, the commission can issue by a special permit, a, a reduction in that. So it's not a variance and then it doesn't inherently run with the land in the same way, you know, to demonstrate hardship. They have to be very clear, yes or no criteria which you have established or which are suggested to be established there. So if you adopt something and, and some homeowner or business owner shows up and says, hey, wait a minute, you know, look at what I've got here. Rather than us trying to craft another change to the reg or sending them to the ZVA to demonstrate hardship, which they almost in every case don't have. You can basically issue a waiver, um. Because the criteria are explicit and it's not something like shall not be detrimental to the safety and welfare of the neighborhood, which no one can define. Um, it doesn't violate the waiver provisions of the McKenzie ruling, which was issued that six years ago.
Yeah, that was easy before that.
Which is totally, yeah. It's an arbitrary, right, issue. So. If you set forth clear standards for which you would issue the waiver and everybody understands what those are and whether or not they can meet them, then we're not in violation. Which is what I'm, you know, trying to get at. The other plus is that if we don't grant variances, they don't run the land forever. So if you do this and you issue a waiver and they redevelop the site five years later, it doesn't sit there.
Right.
Forever.
So it provides us with more flexibility long term rather than issuing all these permits which sit forever and ever and ever. So not major changes from the last time we talked, um, trying to dial it in a little bit and, um. The next step, if you feel like we're at a point where the approach, I think, meets the intent and. And makes sense would be for us to then sit down and come up with the suggested map of how the zones would kind of be laid out. Because we're, we're suggesting there effectively would be three. So if this makes sense, the next step would be to kind of go through that and figure out how the land gets jumped up in these three zones. See how it all fits together and then figure out we need regs, we need to tweak the map, doing two zones, doing four zones. And that's where we are. Questions, comments, concerns, hate it?
No.
Issues?
I think the stormwater might, might pose some challenges. Even at fifty percent of your down, down, well, so you're down now by, down by South Water Street with water tables. Two feet below the circus or something, you might get infiltrated.
I think it's feasible and practical.
Yeah, and, um. One of the things that, well, the state passed LID, we had this big LID. Ten years ago now, maybe, they, they, um, a lot of the towns that, that started that would have everything is, you know, to the maximum extent practical or. As determined to be feasible. So, you know, we could add that language so that if, if an applicant can demonstrate through data that they can't get the fifty percent infiltration. And they're not gonna be required to have it, but at least there's a standard so that people don't just show up and say, I can't do it. And then they just, then it's just a pipe. So I can certainly.
Can I just make a comment there? I, I'm wondering, and it's more a question than anything else, when, when communities, if anybody knows, when communities do these types of things and they're trying to, you know. Target an area for, for, you know, people to use, businesses use it more efficiently and attract business and, you know, to. Attract renovations of the houses and, you know, make everything nicer. Do they, in, in, in a situation where we have that, that. Drainage issue throughout the whole area. We just had that study done, right? And we have the blue ditch, which is. I think that the, a problem and an opportunity where if we were to utilize that for more of the drainage and prove it. You know, and create a working wetland that actually had more volume, um, if that would help satisfy some of those. So if you look at what. Warehouse, uh, yeah, warehouse point department did. They have a retention pond there to look at today. It's full. It's like taking everything from their site and slowly infiltrating. And you know, when it overflows, it goes in the blue ditch. Problem with the blue ditch now is it's just a direct, it's like a pipe. It's like the. The Los Angeles River, you know, there's no storage along it, but there used to be. And I wonder if that's, if that's, if we could get grants to improve those, because I'm picturing like. So you got warehouse point kind of started the program there with their retention base and they're holding everything that they're coming off their site. Going there except for, oh, I forget what the design was, hundred year or two hundred years ago, right? And then right behind. Maple Ave is the blue ditch, but that used to be bigger. It's just grown in and pushed and everybody's been putting things in it forever. When the Lowe's was engineered there, the plan for Lowe's, when lot was, was gonna sell to that, there was a giant retention pond. Engineered on that empty lot, which right now is, you know, it's got springs, it's natural area, but it's just wooded area. That could be improved or however you wanted to say. So my question is, is like. Are there opportunities to, you know, take our side of it and not put it all, so we get overall our fifty percent. Or whatever we're looking for, but we've actually created a situation where our drainage system can, you know, not only works better, it works better than today, but also takes on. More of the load from, you know, the businesses that we wanna see in.
The, the city of Meriden, their downtown center park is a flood control structure. So the park is designed to basically completely flood in rain events like we've had. So if you went out there last week, whatever, it's flooded, but it, but ninety nine percent of the time it's a park. And it was designed for that purpose and it's, and it's, if you've been in, in Meriden, they have sort of like a square or whatever, big open area and it's, it's ringed by structures and. It's, it's designed for that, to increase the compensatory storage when they need it, which isn't often. But they don't have a lot of places for the water to go otherwise. So you could, the benefit there is that they had land that they own. So it's no problem for, for private property owners to shed their water to the town. But the blue ditch, I believe, is private. It's all privately owned.
Yeah, I own a chunk of it.
Right, so unless you wanna give the town an, uh, you know, a document that says everybody can send their water to me. Which is a little more complicated for private property owners, but the solution exists, may not be with the blue ditch, but. Something like this or otherwise, something the town could, could look at. Grants, I, I don't know the answer to that, but. Something we can look into for sure.
Although the blue ditch doesn't work if people fill it in, it's like a straw, you know. Cut, cut, cut.
Or if the water that runs to it is brown and silted up, so you know, something that stores a thousand gallons one year can store five hundred the next.
Yeah, that's right. It's currently both, which makes me think like it's, it's a prime example of, you know, some sort of clean water act grant or something, you know, that. We wanna, you know, not, it's a tributary to the Connecticut River, which is a heritage river. You know, that was that whole idea behind the park is, is that act that came about that created that park was. The reason for it was to clean up the tributary. Well, we gotta park on the side of the river. We didn't clean anything up. But you're right, when the Lowe's, Lowe's were gonna come in, they were gonna have a lot of that and they were gonna do a lot of that. Yeah, there's gonna be that little piece like the cross street from forty three Spring Street. Yeah. Would have been a giant retention. And so anything coming off the hill there would end up in there requiring.
Today is sort of the water cleaning. Definitely.
Do I recollect what Terry's conclusion was correctly? I thought. She was talking about it was advantageous to move the water to the river quickly as opposed to do detention. And hold it.
It. I don't, I mean. I remember Corinne from her report, she stated that flooding in that area is not a problem. Because the water does move quickly to the river in that area. However, it floods when the river backs up and backs up into the tributaries and goes flood. East Windsor that way. East Windsor doesn't flood when it rains hard, it floods when the river floods. So the water leaves East Windsor.
Talking to people on Maple Ave, you live up on the top of the hill, your water goes to their backyard.
No, my water goes to the rivers.
Your water.
A bigger stream behind me because. And that's my point is when it backs up, like you're saying, there's no volume there because the people on Maple Ave dump and stuff and. Right. I think that's their problem. It's not, it's not working in that area anymore. And, you know, basically when warehouse point built, the new addition of the fire station, they actually dredged. The portion of the blue ditch as well as making that retention thing so that the water would go through the plastics. Because it was all filled in right there. It goes under Bridge Street right there and pops up right behind their property. And then go along that retainer and then goes over towards Maple Street.
I seem to recall Terry.
Blue ditch flooded that retention.
Yeah, I, I think the river wasn't up. She felt like it, the blue ditch didn't serve as great of a drainage function as originally anticipated because everything's just keeps rolling. And if it's not functioning because it's been filled in and silted up and everything else, yeah, the water has a place to go, um, but. Just, yeah, i- it's all part of the same problem, but I, I, I think that, um, we don't wanna create this excessive burden and design for the people that are there. But so perhaps, you know, during that discussion during the hearing, there is no design, you know, we can. We can require them to, to show us it's not practical, it's won't burden, and we can, um. We can definitely talk about having them do stuff to at least clean it so that the water that does get conveyed to wherever it goes is. Not, you know, silted and silted and there's a lot of things that we can do, um, and we can, I'll. I'll include some of that and kind of have it all in there. So when it goes to here, we can hear from people and, and kind of see what makes the, has the best fit.
Why is the blue ditch called the blue ditch? The, the dye for the wool. And, and actually my neighbor, who used to be the neighbor down there, um, told me when his kid used to dig in there, um. In the blue ditch in summer, it dries up in the summer. You get down about two feet or so and there's that, there's a layer of. Don't, don't call. Don't take it all, but we call natural organic dye.
Um, when it says colors appropriate into eighteen forty to nineteen ten, what does that mean? And that was, I was like, so what, Hillary, you love to paint the houses?
Yeah, and those, those, those are, are what kind of come out of. Stuff from the warehouse point study. I agree that you don't really wanna get into becoming a historic district, where you start talking about color. I, I, um.
Not supposed to paint your trees or something on the house.
Yeah, I mean, for those things, I, it would be no, um, concern of mine to remove that.
I just.
How about, how about conforms with the appearance of the neighborhood, something? That's even, that's even. At least, I mean, I don't, I don't know, um, what, what colors they had in the nineteen forties, but.
No one can speak firsthand.
You couldn't.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, considered a year since. It might be certainly simpler to, um, remove it than get into debate about it unless you feel strongly that there's a certain palette of colors that you're coming out with, but.
No, uh, it's just, I don't know what it means. So if I had to come to you with something new, you'd be like, well, what does that mean?
Right. Agreed.
But I think, like, the brick color is. Mm-hmm, and I think there's a blue shade that I think of as historic blue, but not neon blue.
Yeah. I think there we can. We can remove that. I think the, the other standards speak to what.
Yeah.
Is being.
Other things are clear.
Easy enough.
You're making really good progress.
Been there.
At what point is it ready for all day? Does it go straight to hearing or is there neighborhood meeting or something?
I think once we have. A comfort level with the map so that we know where properties would fall. And it's probably easier to, to display more publicly because people can get a better sense of where they'll fall in the criteria. We haven't, we have not increased any criteria. There are no setbacks which are larger, there are no.
Right.
Uses which are prohibited with, you know, so this shouldn't.
Once we map it out. We have a public hearing, we can send notices to everyone.
Right.
The district, the district. So they can participate.
Any other thoughts, questions?
Anne, this is Peg. May I ask you who was speaking? I'm, I'm expecting it to be Alan Baker.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
What are you trying to say, Peg?
Not saying much.
Single family. Prohibited in all food zones, why is anyone listed? Right, I should say that Justin Taylor.
So that would basically mean that they, it's just, they won't do the construction of any new single family attached drawings. And that was, again, something that was contemplated and discussed, Carrie and some of her versions of regs. Who can decide what your comfort level is with that. But we're allowing at least for the other, in the court, in the, you know, what you want to, we're saying that, that the attached aren't allowed, we're allowing. Like the single family attached in both the others, but again, attached, so you're gonna see multiple. They can still do two families, a single family attached, isn't that, we can slide that around, again, you. You want, or we can wait till you see the map to get a sense of what you think makes sense, but.
I'm, first time I've seen a table that did not show a single, uh, uh, allowance, you know, mostly everything.
Our regulations are silent for him, right?
Right.
And during that, saying, I just don't say. And being.
You can't list every possible thing, you know, you don't, you don't have shooting ranges, you don't have everything else, so it's not listed as allowed, then it's prohibited, yeah.
Anything? Felt for the business meeting? Your executive session? So it is seven nineteen and a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Welcome to adjourn.
You want a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. It's now.
You guys got it down? You don't even need to talk, trust me.
No. We can try, you mean, you know, you got it wrong here again.